Go ahead and get started. Um, please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
To the flag
United States of America
Of America
It's the republic
Republic
It stands
It stands
Nation
Under God
Under God
Invisible
Invisible
Liberty
Liberty
Justice
Justice
For all
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
All right, um, moving on to the next item, the Journal of the Meeting of May 19th, 2020, has not yet been finalized. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises or zoning matters this evening, so we'll move to road and bridge matters. Road and Bridge Matters, item number one, all districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Moving on to other communications, item number one, Seventh District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Number two, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and refer to the Director of Public Works, or, I'm sorry, refer to the Department of Public Health.
So ordered.
Item three, Fourth District.
Receive, file, and hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
Item number four, Sixth District.
Please hold on your order of business.
So ordered.
Item five, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and refer to the Committee on Public Improvement.
So ordered.
Item number six, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the Acting Administrative Director be directed to schedule a public hearing on the petition to add certain real property to the Afton Plaza Community Improvement District, proposed in the petition, no later than forty-five days from the date in accordance with the CID Act.
So ordered.
Item number seven, Fifth District.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number eight, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed.
So ordered. So ordered.
Item number eleven.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, same motion through item number thirteen, and that will be the order.
Item number fourteen, Fifth District.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number fifteen.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number sixteen, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. There are no add-ons this evening, we will move to the report of the County Executive.
Thank you, Lisa, and good evening, everyone. Last week, our public health orders were changed to allow many of our businesses to reopen. Although many small businesses are open again, things certainly aren't back to normal. We now wear masks everywhere we go. Many stores have one-way aisles, many restaurants are still curbside only. It takes some getting used to, but it's worth it. Because the people of St. Louis County followed the rules, we've gotten through some of the tough times over the past few months. To keep them safe, some of us haven't been able to hug our parents or grandparents in months. We worry about our loved ones in nursing homes, and some of our friends have gotten sick. Some of our neighbors have been hospitalized, and sadly, we have lost almost all four hundred of our loved ones. I remain confident that the overwhelming majority of St. Louis County residents understand the seriousness of this virus and are acting responsibly to prevent its spread. The photos that surfaced from Lake of the Ozarks were an international example of bad behavior. I've asked all who returned from the holiday weekend to self-quarantine if they were unable or unwilling to practice social distancing and to avoid crowds where the virus can spread like a brush fire. Because we've implemented effective public health policies proactively, we've avoided things getting as bad as they did in other areas of the country. And because we collaborated with the business community to craft policies that did not place undue burdens on employers, we were able to keep unemployment claims from growing as much as some expected. The coronavirus was a challenge, but the people of St. Louis County rose to meet that challenge head-on and helped to slow the spread. Beyond the public health crisis, the virus has hit hard on our economy, and our challenge is to open the economy safely. To have a healthy economy, we need to have healthy workers. So first and foremost, we still must protect public health, and we're doing that by crafting industry-specific guidelines, working hand-in-hand with businesses and workers to find policies that make sense. To have a healthy economy, we need to make sure we get this right. So we continue to slowly reopen, and we're keeping a close and watchful eye on the test results and hospital admissions, both solid indicators of how our community is faring. Social distancing, wearing masks, and washing hands must continue to be a part of our daily routines, and the data will help guide our actions, and we'll continue to move forward carefully, gradually, and cautiously. And a healthy economy requires a government that is willing to evolve to meet the challenges we face. We make sure that county government helps businesses that are reopening. That's why we created the Small Business Relief Program and have assembled an economic rescue team. And that's also why tonight I'm asking the council to consider expediting its consideration of Bill 119. Councilman Harder introduced Bill 119 last week, and it would allow county departments to suspend enforcement of laws that might impede the ability of restaurants to open and adjust their business practices to the new normal. This bill language includes that would still allow the departments to enforce laws that are necessary to protect public health and safety, while also allowing them to give businesses more flexibility than usual during this reopening period. I support this bill, and I look forward to signing it as soon as it's passed. I appreciate Councilman Harder bringing this issue to the forefront and his dedication in helping businesses reopen. This council has been through a lot together, and I will continue working together with you as we cautiously and gradually reopen St. Louis County. If we do this right, and if everyone plays by the rules, we will be able to have a safe and healthy economy that St. Louis needs and deserves. And more importantly, we'll be able to go and see our grandparents again real soon. Thank you.
Thank you. We will proceed with reports of special committees.
Our first report this evening is from the Justice, Health, and Welfare Committee.
Yes. Uh, this report, um, was a discussion regarding the health disparities and the, um, disparity within the African, African-American community regarding COVID-19 and the number of people who have been affected in, uh, that community. So, um, we had a good discussion with Dr. Purnell and, um, the Administrator of Christian Hospital Northeast, and with that, receive, file, and the report be adopted as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And our second report this evening is the Special Committee for Oversight of COVID-19 Funding and Expenditures, the May 19th report.
Uh, per my usual chairwoman, I'm gonna have a statement about today's, after I receive, file, and the report be adopted as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second, Days.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So our Special Committee on Oversight of COVID-19 Funding and Expenditures met this morning at ten AM with four major agenda items: minority participation in the DTC, the DPH budget, the SBRP, and the municipal league's request. I promise to clarify all those acronyms. Uh, we spent the first half of the meeting talking through the procurement process that resulted in the dignified transfer center and how minority participation requirements are satisfied. Um, we, I think we left, uh, with a lot of questions, and this committee will continue to push for stronger support of MBE and WBE, um, even in emergency situations. Spring Schmidt provided an overview of the Department of Public Health's fifty-ish million-dollar CARES Act budget and took a deeper dive on community grants of seven million dollars and mental health, two million dollars. We learned a good bit about the frustrations of an outdated, paper-driven system and how government at all levels needs to invest in technological infrastructure. I suspect this will be an ongoing topic as we navigate delivering services remotely. As of yesterday, we have three thousand one hundred and fifty-four small business relief program applications throughout St. Louis County. Each application will be independently audited, and we hope to have decisions made by mid-June and checks sent out in early July. And because we're still waiting for Treasury Department guidance on the municipal league's forty-seven million dollar request, it holds its place in the county CARES budget. Uh, we will meet again next Tuesday morning at ten AM and welcome the participation of the public. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dunaway. Um, that brings us to the public forum portion of our agenda. Um, I would like to remind everyone of a couple of, of things regarding our public forum. Um, we all have a role to play to protect and ensure the integrity of this forum, so that this forum can be a source of pride for us all and can serve as a positive example to residents and other policymaking bodies here in our region. I encourage every person who participates in this forum to speak with tolerance and respect towards the council, other officials in county government, and to each other. To go over again a few of the rules of our virtual forum, only comments sent to councilcomments@stlewisco.com on the day in which the meeting is being held, at least an hour before the meeting starts, will be recorded into the public record. The email must contain the commenter's name and physical address. The comment must be four hundred words or less, which is the equivalent of three minutes total of verbal communication, which is what we would allow if we were meeting in person. The administrative director or designee will read the comment out loud during the meeting, and it will be recorded into the journal. With that, you may proceed with our public forum. Please read the first comment.
Yes, Madam Chair, we have thirty-three public comments this evening. Our first one comes from Jeff Kramer, twenty-one nineteen Bond Royal Drive, DePere, Missouri, six-three-one-three-one. "I don't side with Democrats or Republicans, I vote for whoever I think is the best candidate. You have to ask yourself these questions and provide answers to tax-paying citizens of St. Louis County. Why are you waiting until June fifteenth to allow all businesses to open? I can't go to my own gym. I refuse to participate in quarantine life until there's an unsafe, untested vaccine released. Businesses have the right to operate as they see fit instead of being micromanaged by this county council. It is our right to decide for ourselves, and we still cannot exercise our right to practice our religion freely. Why do you want to track St. Louis County residents? What is your motive here? I do not support contact tracing because this is an unconstitutional invasion of privacy. It doesn't matter whether citizens are to be microchipped or tracked on their phones. What are your plans for the one hundred and seventy-three point five million dollars in federal coronavirus money? I do not understand why the council gave Dr. Page and his administration complete authority. Dr. Page, if you are truly the county executive, do you have a budget in place? I've read that you are spending money in the wrong places for the wrong things. This is a lot of money to throw away. Just act wise, be fair, and equitable to all who need the money. Why is the county paying Sidney Brinkley to do the job we voted county council members to do? What is your agenda and plans for the rest of 2020, or at least through August, in case you get voted out? The key to political success is to be transparent and not to continually hide your agenda. Dr. Page, weren't you critical of the Stanger administration for not being transparent? Anyone who thinks that social distancing is a good idea for the next few years, wants to be microchipped, or thinks that a dictatorship is good for humanity, probably, probably wants to create a socialistic society. Please put a stop to the nonsense of social distancing and get back to our normally scheduled society. I have to say, the Democrats are showing their true colors by backing themselves into a corner with poor leadership, day after day, and 2020 is indeed going to be an electoral nightmare for their party." From Derek Duncan, twelve-nine-sixty Lampadaire Drive, Creve Court, Missouri. "I am extremely disappointed in your office's approach towards Joe Corbett House of Pain and Fitness Centers. House of Pain is a forty thousand-plus-square-foot facility where never more than twenty-five people train at a time. Ace Hardware next door could see twice the number of people in half the space. House of Pain is the cleanest facility I have ever been in. It's likely cleaner than the room you are sitting in right now, and I guarantee they have more sanitizing equipment. Dr. Burke said, 'Out of respect for each other, we need to be wearing masks in public when we cannot social distance.' The key here is when we cannot social distance. We can social distance at a gym, so your claim that we cannot go to gyms yet because we cannot wear required masks holds no weight. I struggle with depression. House of Pain saved me. To say that I can exercise at, instead of a gym, is like saying you can walk instead of drive. To say that is to be ignorant of the importance of physical fitness and the variety of experiences you can get at a gym. The livelihoods of many have been crushed. These people who put mental and physical health and wellness as their number-one priority in life are so vitally important, essential to members of the community. You may think that you are doing the right thing in order to prevent further spread of COVID-19, but the reality is the prescription to prevent major illness is what you are prohibiting. A gym where employees and customers take health and sanitation seriously, gyms have stocked sanitizers and cleaning supplies for customers for years, is far safer than the thousands of other businesses where someone goes to pump gas or eat a meal. Gym owners are the experts in health and wellness. You should have been listening to them from the beginning, not neglecting them like they are the enemy. If you expert, if your experts believe the spread of COVID-19 is more likely at a gym, then I ask the rest of the state, including Kansas City and St. Charles County, does not agree with you. You are arbitrarily picking winners and losers. It's not right and not fair. Your crusade against the fitness industry is abhorrent, and I am truly disappointed." From Kurt Whitzel, thirty-one sixteen South Ridge Park Lane, St. Louis, Missouri. Madam Chairperson, Councilwoman Clancy, hello out there. Ms. Clancy, are you listening? For the past months, we have heard letter after letter from taxpayers who live on Christopher Road in South County as for your help in finding out why the county is allowing a business to be opened and run on a two-lane strictly residential street in Oakville. I do not live on Christopher Road, but Madam Chair, wouldn't it be simple, common courtesy for you to publicly answer these people's concerns? We have not heard a single word from you on this issue. Councilman Tracus has apparently been sidestepped by nine-floor-page bureaucrats in county government to allow this tragedy to happen to these homeowners, and you, as head of the council, apparently do not care what happens to this neighborhood. This is incredibly sad. I spent hours listening to the May nineteenth meeting of the Special Committee for Oversight of COVID-19 Funding and Expenditures. With all due respect, isn't that responsibility, the oversight of COVID-19 CARES Act funding and expenditures, that you gave away with, when the four female members of the squad voted to give the county executive the ability to spend the one hundred and seventy-five million dollars exactly how he wants with no oversight? During that meeting, Councilwoman Day, Councilwoman Day said, quote, "The county executive is making unilateral decisions on how we spend that money, and we are not just window dressing here, we want to be part of the spending process," end quote. Councilwoman Clancy said, quote, "We should not take time to think through these things, meaning where the money is to be spent, or, the county executive will, have spent it all and we won't have any," end quote. Councilwoman Days also commented, quote, "This is a big problem. We don't know how much money we have, and we don't know how it is allocated," end quote. Councilwoman Dunaway also said, quote, "There's also a multimillion-dollar COVID expenditure for the building escalator demolition," end quote, "that we know nothing about." Councilwoman Clancy replied, quote, "We need to find out more about this before this COVID-19 expense is approved," end quote. How can any of the four Democratic women of the squad even ask these questions after have you already given away the council's oversight responsibilities? Thank you. From Amy Ekman, twenty-one forty-two White Lane Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri. "Although I support recommendations for social distancing and handwashing, which have been universally accepted for decades to fight respiratory illness spread, please consider forcing all businesses to put their customers and employees at risk by requiring the very recently recommended use of face masks. No bias-free study has ever found a benefit from wearing masks to prevent virus spread through such a broad recommendation, and several existing studies show that masks are unnecessary for most. A very few exceptions do exist. See linked research paper below for details." The following paper, Masks Don't Work, a review of science relevant to COVID-19 social policy, April 2020, illustrates the degree to which governments and the media can decide to operate in a science vacuum, or select only incomplete science that serves their interests. Included are key findings with links to the extensive scientific literature on the subject. A quote from this paper states, "In light of the medical research, it is difficult to understand why public health authorities are not consistently adamant about this established scientific result, since the distributed psychological, economic, and environmental harm from a broad recommendation to wear masks is significant, not to mention the unknown potential harm from concentration and distribution of pathogens on and from used masks. In this case, public authorities are turning the precautionary principle on its head." From a video, Dr. Fauci says no masks needed by most. Something to think about. Thank you. From Libby Wilkinson, thirty-nine Claremont Lane, St. Louis, Missouri. "I am writing to encourage you to take back the control of the CARES money. It is horrible governance to give away the oversight of such a large amount of money. It may be easier for you to just let someone else do it. However, that is your job. If you don't want to pay attention and decide how this money is spent, I would ask that you step down. It is the St. Louis County Council's job to oversee this money. Do your job or recuse yourself." The other item is do not allow contact tracing. This is an invasion of privacy. Do you support totalitarianism? Will you go on record as supporting totalitarian methods in government? In a fear-driven moment, very bad decisions are made. Please rise above that and support the rights and freedoms guaranteed to us as citizens of the United States. Thank you."
Madam Chair, continuing. Following comment is from Lynn Labob, ninety-seven oh one Irene Place, St. Louis, Missouri, six-three-one-two-three. "If the self-proclaimed Democrat council squad would have focused more on the issues rather on, rather than on their gender-biased behavior and treating their Republican colleagues so poorly, then perhaps the squad would have had a different vote outcome regarding giving Sam Page total control over the one hundred and seventy-five million in federal COVID money, which has turned into a disaster faster than even imagined. As it was, the Democrat council squad was so focused on their winning the COVID vote and denying the Republicans on the council from having any say on the matter, that the squad lost all sight of what was really important: the citizens and the taxpayer of this county. The Democrat squad allowed their progressive agenda to get in the way of people's business, and now the people of this county are suffering because of the squad's narrow-minded and spiteful thinking. Attention, Squad. Not everyone thinks as you do. Had you just asked the three Republicans on the council their opinions on the matter of the oversight of the federal COVID one hundred and seventy-five million, and the pros and cons of no council oversight versus council oversight, you would have gained some additional knowledge and experience that you didn't possess. There's no shame in not having knowledge, but there's a big shame in not trying to educate yourself on an important issue when you realize that you don't know enough about it. That's called stupidity. But no, don't ever let a good crisis go to waste. That's the Democrat mantra. So you took a crisis and turned it into a big waste. Waste of our tax dollars for Sam Page to squander with abandoned honest cronies with no council oversight. Face it, Squad, your after-the-fact little bitty training-wheel oversight committee does nothing. Absolutely nothing. It has no power. Sam Page can do whatever the heck he wants to do with the one hundred and seventy-five million COVID money courtesy, courtesy of the Democrat council squad." Following comment from Mark Gamash, sixteen-twelve Mason Knoll Road, St. Louis, Missouri, six-three-one-three-one. "Dear Dr. Page, Council Chair Clancy, and members of the council, please discontinue the overreach in response to the COVID-19 situation. The year has become much worse than the virus. Closure of the parks and expending two million on a temporary morgue for thirteen-hundred bodies are just two examples of the blatant abuse of power and misuse of government funds. The lack of oversight of the one hundred and seventy-plus million in federal aid is outrageous and will only lead to corruption. Trampling on civil liberties and deliberately damaging the economy in a futile attempt to discredit Trump and assist Biden in the upcoming election is shameful. It's way past time to allow people to earn a living. Respectfully, Mark Gamash." Following comment from Matt Castalone, Genesis Banquet Center, twenty-six fifty-one Telegraph Road, six-three-one-two-five. "Dear Sam Page, thank you for leading us in these challenging times. I own a banquet center in District Six. Several banquet owners recently met with representatives of the Health Department. We believe at the very least we should be classified along with restaurants. In fact, event spaces are safer. For example, we were able to contact tracer, but contact trace better than any business. We know the entire guest list. There's actually more room to social distance. Don't be misled by group size. We can only have one event per day for four hours. This gives plenty of time to sanitize after the event. Most events are held on the weekends, again, giving plenty of time to clean during the week. Only one group sits at a table, at the same table, the entire evening. A restaurant, while smaller, can be open twelve hours a day. Presumably, the customers will spend an hour or more dining afterwards. The restaurant will look to turn the tables immediately afterwards with a new group. Of course, we will go above and beyond required health guidelines for the safety of our valued customers. We also have alternative options to the standard buffet, one-sided with only staff handling all the plates and serving utensils, or a seated, a seated service option. Wedding receptions are our primary business. Experience with the COVID-19 crisis shows us that no bride wants their wedding reception without knowing when we are able to offer receptions again. We have couples in October and November that now want to cancel their dates because banquets have been singled out as an ineligible group to participate in the current reopening. For small companies such as us, this is devastating. Undoubtedly, all events in the foreseeable future will have much fewer numbers than anticipated than originally scheduled. Most likely, compromised guests, in quotes, elderly, health risks, et cetera, in quotes, will choose on their own accord not to participate in larger gatherings. Even though we will, even though we will little or no events in the next two months, allowing us to open will restore confidence with our customers and mitigate client departures further down the calendar. We have great faith not only in our county leadership, but also in our own leadership we have great faith not only in our county leadership and also in our own leadership participation in the reopening please consider the conditions under which we can work something out similar to treatment for restaurants at the very least following comment from Patty Cantor 8025 Maryland Avenue Clayton Missouri 63105 excuse me I don't know where to begin I learned last week that during the council county council meeting we have a squad of two Lisa Clancy and Kelly Dunaway that is alarming I learned that councilman Ernie Tracus was not allowed to speak by Lisa Clancy and the email made it sound like that happened because Ernie is a man and it was done to prove a point that is alarming then there's the ever continuing lockdown by Sam Page as was highlighted in the news this weekend we are leaving St Louis County and going elsewhere shopping dining and supporting businesses in St Charles and Jefferson County instead of St Louis County is the new normal people with access to second homes travel there the county executive cannot force people to behave the way he wants that was proven at the Lake of the Ozarks this weekend we are a nation founded in freedom in which St Louis County is included we will not be dictated to we we will acknowledge the information given and will do what we think is best as Sheriff Tom Helm stated social distancing is not a law and therefore cannot be enforced pools should be opened unless there is secret information known only by Sam Page being in a pool is safer than being in a store open the pool so people can get outside studies will show that the lockdown of St Louis County to have caused more damage than the covid nineteen virus ever did or could open up our county our freedom doesn't end where your fair begins the communist experiment is over we want our freedom comments from Celeste Whistle 3116 Southridge Park Lane St Louis Missouri 63129 Lisa Clancy complained aloud during last week's council meeting as to whether people who are submitting written public comments during the covid quarantine would be given the same comments in person during county council meetings yes we would these quarantine comments are not something we are hiding behind as Clancy accused rather citizens are obeying pages quarantine and submitting written comments to be read by county staff instead of in person by ourselves many of these citizens have previously made public comments in person during meetings some many times because citizens want to bring questionable county actions to the attention of residents and the media for Clancy to accuse citizens of hiding because they have to stay home at pages direction is just so typical of Clancy's mindset the self-proclaimed squad prefers to mischaracterize these comments because the squad views them through the prism of their own of their own hurt at being the rightful targets of several citizens criticisms including a lack of sound leadership gross inexperience Clancy's ineptness at running meetings gender biased behaviors mean girl actions against councilmen ignoring the concerns of citizens the squad's political votes and the serious conflict of interest votes by Clancy citizens are speaking truth to power and the power in St Louis County is presently very corrupt even during quarantine citizens need to watch this county government closely unfortunately these past 10 weeks citizens have witnessed many mistakes made by the squad and by Sam Page and we citizens took time submitting comments calling out these mistakes poor judgments and outright conflicts of interest by this crew unfortunate residents of Christopher Road now know firsthand how citizens get no satisfaction from county government the county went behind the back of their councilman Ernie Tracus to approve a commercial development in the middle of a residential area the council can right this terrible wrong and Christopher Road citizens deserve to be heard yes the squad should know that those who submitted written public comments during quarantine pointing out the many problematic problematic behaviors and votes of Democrats would have recited these same comments in person you don't want these type of comments that conduct yourselves conduct yourselves professionally with the citizens and their concerns first in your mind and we won't have to make these comments
continuing with public comments from Linda Crenning 7200 Christopher St Louis Missouri I can't understand what I need to say to make you understand how wrong this is allowing this medical treatment center to operate in our residential neighborhood we all make mistakes but this can be corrected with our St Louis County Council by making the fair and right decision to say no to Montenegro why doesn't our Oakville neighborhood matter we want the same thing you want to live in a quiet neighborhood and not have to worry about our kids playing outside with little or no traffic in a residential atmosphere we have so many problems right now and we don't need a billion dollar company coming into our residential neighborhood and causing problems just because they can there are no sidewalks lighting and parking to accommodate what they need because if you think about it who lives next door to a home where there are 19 parking spaces in front of their home that will work for them but not the residents who have invested in this neighborhood how did this get passed I have lived in this neighborhood for 42 years and I don't want to live next to a medical treatment center because that's what we will have if you don't do your job and say no to Montenegro I am asking our St Louis County Council not to be intimidated by this out of state billion dollar company who doesn't care what this will do to our residential neighborhood because their main focus is profit not our long time existing neighborhood just think about this and help us save our neighborhood thank you from Ron Crenning 7200 Christopher Drive St Louis Missouri I live next door to 7190 Christopher Drive where a commercial for profit business named Montenegro is planned it definitely does not belong in this residential neighborhood where families and kids work and play safely like a normal neighborhood as we all know this residence was designed and built for a family owned unit not a medical treatment center trying to call their operation a group home it's not please don't let this happen this is not fair and not welcoming and never will be this is not a fit for the families here please help us and say no to Montenegro thank you from Paula Coughlin 14 Grenada Way Ladue Missouri the United States is safely reopening not St Louis County all economic experts and news outlets are optimistic on the economy not St Louis County the covid nineteen curve on cases hospitalizations and deaths has flattened and is on a downward trend no response from St Louis County medical experts and organizations are positive that treatments and possible vaccines are are imminent no response from St Louis County data now shows that 99% of healthy people under 65 years of age with covid nineteen have no or mild symptoms and fully recover no response from St Louis County what more are you waiting for end this slow walk walk opening and fully open St Louis County today a month ago on April 28 2020 I wrote into you and stated the following I strongly oppose any plan to spend the federal cares package of 173.5 million dollars that does not involve the full vote of the county council Mr Page you stated publicly in the St Louis Post Dispatch that obtaining approval for your spending from the council would be burdensome burdensome and would cause delays this claim is dishonest you meet with the council every Tuesday propose your spending proposals on the record and hold a vote for them on the record every week if necessary this is transparency by definition and it is the intended role of the council reporting your spending after you have spent it is not transparency I ask that the council reject this proposal and force and on the record discussion and vote for all spending related to the federal cares fund you did not reject the proposal and while I am somewhat relieved this week to hear that the Democrats on the council finally seem to understand the importance of oversight for this fund you foolishly voted away your oversight power on April 28 Sam Page has now hired and is paying with taxpayer money a retired Centene executive Cindy Brinkley to provide the spending oversight this is your job as per the St Louis County Charter and we already pay you to do it you must immediately rectify this mistake and vote to reinstate your oversight power over the federal cares act fund and over Sam Page from Martha Duchchild 9158 General Grant Lane St Louis Missouri 63123 when confronted with the economic and health issues brought about by the coronavirus pandemic the Democrats on the county council did exactly what Supreme Court Justice Sandra Day O'Connor warned against in a 1992 court opinion in which she asserted that quote the Constitution protects us from our own best intentions it divides power among sovereigns and among branches of government precisely so that we may resist the temptation to concentrate power in one location as an expedient solution to the crisis of the day end quote as legislators in a constitutional republic those who voted to strip the council of its important appropriation power would be well served by a more thorough understanding of their duty to hold and violate the separation of powers doctrine rather than accept the compromise offered by their Republican colleagues the Democrats on the council chose instead to forfeit the council's appropriation authority over the 173.5 million dollars in cares act funds in favor of investing that authority with the county executive consequently they also forfeited the council's ability to have any control over where and how those funds are spent using the special committee on covid oversight as a forum to raise objections to the county executives cares act commission's decisions only serves to delay and fracture the county's response to the pressing issues brought about by the pandemic in terms of affecting policy or appropriating funds the Oversight Committee is a government body without any real authority one has to wonder how differently the county's response would have been had the two amendments discussed by the Charter Commission first for nonpartisan elective offices and second for a county manager form of government been in place it might be worth reflecting on the merits of these two changes as the absence of partisan gamesmanship and the presence of a more streamlined organization of county departments under a professional county manager may well have left the county in a much better position to respond effectively to the pandemic thank you from Claire Atkins 12835 Topping Manor Drive St Louis Missouri 63131 over the last couple of months I have regrettably observed you the locally elected officials put politics before the public interest during this public health emergency for example on April 21 federal money was available to purchase PPE and covid nineteen test kits items we all agree were desperately needed in our community this was a vote all members should have been able to agree on I naively thought this would pass because we were being told there was a desperate need yet the vote failed on a purely partisan basis our first responders healthcare workers nursing home caregivers all had to wait another seven days before the matter was voted on again and finally approved during this time people suffered needlessly lives were endangered and perhaps lives were lost as a result of the delayed vote when I hear proclamations that saving lives is the number one priority it rings hollow when measured against your actions it leads me to question whether our nursing homes received the proper support from the county public health officers from the beginning and even now we were told the most vulnerable needed to be protected but were they were the elderly sent from hospital to recover in nursing homes only to infect others with coronavirus I hope there will be a full investigation into how St Louis County has handled this crisis in the meantime I am glad to see the St Louis Post Dispatches listening to these public comments traditionally the press holds local officials accountable and I hope you will now start asking probing questions and investigating what is really going on in our nursing homes St Louis County has the largest concentration in nursing homes in the state of Missouri why this question deserves an answer Illinois is reporting the number of deaths affiliated with specific nursing homes how about St Louis County do the same local businesses are being highly regulated with arbitrary reopening guidelines and we residents are being lectured daily on how to conduct our lives it feels like all this is a deflection from the real story of lives lost as a result of decisions made by the St Louis County Council it's time to give us the facts not just the narrative sincerely
and I'm Chair continuing following comment from Emily Williams 15723 Summer Ridge Drive Chesterfield Missouri 63017 excuse me dear St Louis County Executive Chair and gang I use the term gang in all seriousness the definition stands as this gang an organized group of criminals this is what you all are behaving like little gang lording over all your citizens controlling any and all actions of business and driving people and their livelihood into the ground any female owned businesses are being driven to clo- into closure many African American businesses are also being driven into closure plenty of single parents are losing businesses due to your actions you have been out have you been out and talked to any of them I have it's so sad this is appalling how can you sleep at night is this the legacy you want to go down with who is filling your pockets to keep this up why is the San Francisco paper so excited about your draconian efforts the economic fallout will be far greater than any virus suicides drug and alcohol induced destruction way to go pushing St Louis County and city farther down the drain you should be proud of the damage you personally have continued to impose completely disregarding our governor's opening of the great state of Missouri for your health Emily Williams following comment from Terry Desloge number 25 Chesterfield Missouri 63005 to members elected to the county council I sincerely urge you to give oversight to the spending of the federal cares money back to every member of the county council history has proven that power in the hand that power in a few hands breeds corruption the purpose of St Louis County having a committee is to manage according to the diverse areas they represent in addition will you please drop every lawsuit you have against businesses that are just trying to survive I am embarrassed for our county that you would even attempt to use your time for this don't we have bigger fish to fry it is too early to hire contact tracers as information about tracing the virus changes daily could you please use those resources to assist wash you with their efforts medicines that cure could one of you please respond after you read all of your constituents comments and give some type of feedback that we have been heard sincerely sincerely Terry Desloge excuse me following comment from William Pyatt 7184 Christopher Drive St Louis Missouri 63129 thank you for agreeing agreeing to re-review the ill-advised for-profit California based business proposed in the middle of a purely residential neighborhood at 7190 Christopher Drive in St Louis County finally some semblance of respect for the taxpaying residents who live in the area and we appreciate it while you are reconsidering whether or not this out of state for-profit business venture in a quiet neighborhood where children play in their yards is appropriate I respectfully ask that you please take a drive up and down Christopher Drive to see firsthand what you were deciding on I totally picture the parking spot stripes and the concrete bumpers surrounding the many vehicles in the proposed parking lot on the street in the face of our homes the extra traffic of employees and delivery trucks and van literally feet from our children playing in their yards racing up and down this once quiet drive and think about the assuredly negative impact on the value of our homes your taxpaying loyal citizens homes at the expense of a California based business that could put their business anywhere and then ask yourself deep down if you truly feel this is appropriate and how you would feel if this was your neighborhood there is a reason we have areas designated for people to live and separate areas for people to run businesses and make their living the loophole Montenegro is using to gain entry into our neighborhood without rezoning and placing their business here is an interpretation by someone who definitely never visited our neighborhood and obviously doesn't care about us that is what we have you for please come take a look thank you following comment from Diane Clark 1688 Front Neck Woods Lane St Louis Missouri 63131 dear Dr Page council chair Clancy and the St Louis County Council I implore you to allow all businesses to open their doors immediately if they so choose this includes gyms public pools and places of worship let their customer slash members choose whether or not to frequent these establishments who are you to decide what is essential and what is not let us make these decisions for ourselves and our families what is not? Let us make these decisions for ourselves and our families. I do not support contact tracing. It poses a serious violation of our civil liberties and privacy. This is a slippery slope for us all. Data collected will not be consistent or accurate as we've seen with the models our government used to shut us down in the first place. This data will be manipulated and exploited to control the public. It will do more harm than good. Sincerely, Diane Clark. Following a comment from Beth and Kevin Rug, 7201 Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri 63129. Excuse me. We are writing again today to express our disappointment in the various departments of St. Louis County. Week after week, the residents of unincorporated St. Louis County have written into the council voicing our concerns and asking questions. These are not rhetorical questions. We want answers. But we continue to be ignored. Beth Orwick's office has still failed to comply with the requests of county residents and Councilman Tracus to get information. The council's office will not explain their justification for letting a for-profit corporation move into a residential neighborhood. Being attorneys, I'm sure they are very familiar with the terms sunshine law and public record. Why are they refusing to comply with our requests? Is Ms. Orwick's office waiting to hear from our attorneys? It won't be long. Departments of Planning and Public Works have failed to address how they almost let a permit to be issued for a commercial business labeled "adult daycare," end quotes, with an allowance to 31 parking spaces in a neighborhood. The definition for an adult daycare isn't even close to that of a group home. An adult daycare is a business that would require a conditional use permit for this area and thus a public hearing. Upon reviewing the second set of plans, it was clear that Montinito had submitted language for a desired 12 residents. They have no intention of operating a group home of eight residents or less. Calls to Montinito confirm they do not identify as a group home to prospective clients. Montinito purchases property with the intent to fill it as short-term patients as possible. They will not have residents who live at the property long-term. Montinito intends to run an inpatient treatment facility in a neighborhood. They are no different than Cedar Point Hospital or Highland Behavioral Health. Why doesn't the county see that? Why won't the county acknowledge the factual information that we have provided? Why won't they answer our questions? Is our government really that incompetent, or is St. Louis County in an $1,100 a night bed with Montinito?
From Diane Unger, 26 Baxter Lane, Chesterfield, Missouri 63017. It appears that your haphazard spending practices have aroused suspicion throughout the county. Spending the CARES funding should be scrutinized by the entire council. County residents as well as the news media are finally waking up and demanding accountability from you. County residents placed trust in you to make wise and fiscally responsible decisions for our good. We did not expect you to be hiring and using outside sources to oversee expenditures. The entire council should be making decisions as your charter mandates. I also have great trepidation with the chatter concerning tracking or tracing. I feel this would be a step towards further infringement on our privacy. I'm asking you to respect our privacy and therefore not encourage any tracking procedures. From Dawn Shaver, 744 Lee May Ferry Road, St. Louis, Missouri 63125. COVID-19 has been devastating to our business owners and residents, and we can only hope that the recovery will not be overwhelming. One thing I know for sure, of the business owners that I have spoken to, they are all eager to get to the next phase and on to our new normal. We have responsible business people in our community, in your community. They have every intention of complying with the guidelines for two reasons. One, it is for the safety of the community, the community in which they live and work. Two, it is for the longevity of their business. Today, I'm writing in support of the event centers opening. Some event centers have large weddings, which everyone knows is currently off the table. We do know that they also hold smaller events, a private luncheon after a funeral, a baby shower, a rehearsal dinner. They could hold 40 to 50 people events in an area that normally holds 200 people. These are events that last as long as a typical dinner. Or they could hold a job fair with people coming through with masks and treat it like any other business with a maximum number of people and a line to get in. They have events outdoors or partly outdoors. Some have extraordinary ventilation systems to control the flow of air. They are willing and enthusiastic business owners in each of your council districts, ready to comply with the Health Department any way needed to open. We are hoping that you will see that existing rules, if immediately applied to event centers, will throw a lifeline to them. As the Health Department eases restrictions, the event centers will be able to adjust until we are able to reach 100%. As a chamber director, I can say unequivocally that when we hold our first luncheon at an event center, that we will expect and encourage everyone to practice social distancing, wearing masks when appropriate, and setting a good example for our community. Dawn Shaver, Chamber Director of the Lee May Chamber of Commerce. The next comment is from Chris Witrock, Manager at Tapawingo National Golf Club. Good evening. This is an email, excuse me. His address is 13001 Gary Player Drive, Sunset Hills, Missouri 63127. Good evening. This is an email from one of our brides and grooms at Tapawingo National Golf Club. I forwarded this message to show you how we have been interacting with our clients regarding employee and guest safety. First of all, our max capacity is 200 guests in our dining banquet areas, so we are not in our minds a large venue. We have the advantage of plenty of social distancing as well as outdoor spaces for our guests to enjoy. We have the ultimate ability to contact trace as well. Our events are private events with easily accessible guest lists and in most cases assigned seating. While we are making our own arrangements to ensure the safety of everyone on our premises, we feel that we can much more easily control social distancing and safety than a restaurant can. In addition to the above-mentioned items, we and other banquet facilities have more square footage than the average restaurant. We fully understand the need to be safe and make arrangements to best ensure safety. However, aside from not being allowed to operate, we can't even help our events make arrangements for future planning. So at the very minimum, a hard date is very much needed so all parties involved can make appropriate planning, rescheduling, arrangements. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen and consider these big decisions. I implore you, for the sake of our business and livelihoods of many, please let us open as soon as possible. And he included the email from the bride and groom that says, "Thank you for taking the time to speak with my future mother-in-law, my fiance, and myself about your social distance precautions you would implement for our upcoming wedding reception. After speaking with you about the social distancing in tables, how the staff would wear all proper garments, face masks and gloves, and the fact we will be providing you with a headcount and complete list of all attendees, we are feeling very confident that every measure is being taken to keep us, our family and friends, safe during this time. We understand the rules about the buffet, dessert table, appetizers, and coffee and bar setup. This helps ensure the safety of your staff and our guests, and we greatly appreciate it. We have waited years to celebrate this very special day, and we appreciate all of your and Tapawingo's work in trying to make this happen in the safest way possible." And I have to cut it off there because it's 400 words. Moving on to Kate Stratton, 10253 Eddingham Terrace, St. Louis, Missouri 63128. This week, the St. Louis Post Dispatch noticed a squad was questioning Dr. Page's use of a retired Centene executive, Cindy Brinkley, to provide oversight for spending decisions. This could be fixed easily by the county council voting to return oversight of the CARES Act funding to the entire county council. Also, why are we paying Cindy Brinkley to do the job we voted the county council members to do? The squad also voted oversight powers away to Dr. Page to allow him to do as he wishes. This mistake also could be corrected by the county council simply voting to oversee this spending themselves as they are mandated to do by the charter. I encourage the council to use the CARES Act funds for the small business relief program. Because of your heavy-handedness of keeping the county in lockdown, many small businesses are struggling and are probably never going to open up again. I urge you not to support contact tracing and the unconstitutional invasion of privacy that it will usher in. Now we have the possibility of our cell phones being used to trace our activities under the guise of keeping us safe. No amount of promised safety is worth shredding the Fifth, First, and Fourth Amendments of the Constitution. Please don't be building a case for tracing using the Lake of the Ozarks and start manipulating the COVID numbers to look like they are heading upward. Fully opening the county for business on June 16th is a travesty. Businesses should have the right to operate as they see fit instead of being micromanaged by the county council majority. It is our right to decide for ourselves as well as business owners to have masks on or masks off, especially since the CDC can't agree whether they are helpful or not. It has been so disheartening to see the inability of the council not able to perform their duties and responsibilities and work together for the good of the community. From Deb Matush, 1455 Cragewald Road, Kirkwood, Missouri 63122. I just returned from Jefferson County shopping where there is normal commerce and traffic. St. Louis County only in big-box stores. After this past weekend at Lake of the Ozarks, you have more fodder to punish citizens of St. Louis County for other antics. Lake of the Ozarks draws from eight surrounding states, yet you want to punish the citizens of St. Louis County. Are you and Lyda Crusen in cahoots on this? You two are like Hansel and Gretel. You've lost your way, and the crumbs you're leaving are exposing your political intentions, tracking and tracing. If suing the proprietor of House of Pain Gym is not enough, you now want business owners to invade the lives of their employees by asking if they were at the lake. Hold on. Privacy issues. Since gyms in Jefferson County are open, are you going on national TV and slander them too? Take care of the weeds in your own backyard before you ask others to take care of the weeds in theirs. Your weeds, number one. Full disclosure of expenditures from the CARES Act. Is an exposé necessary, Mr. Page? County Council, where are you? Is Ms. Brinkley a friend or acquaintance of one of you all? Excuse me, acquaintance of one of you all? I'm starting to think about Mr. Stanger. Number two. St. Louis County is closed for business only for those you think should be closed. Every time I shop or eat in Jefferson or St. Charles Counties, it helps their tax base. County Council, where are you? June 16th? Really? When June 16th arrives, will you punish us and extend it again? Tour season's here, County Council. Where are you? Number three. Contact tracing? Not sure why you don't understand this is an unconstitutional issue of privacy. Is it the Wuhan virus statistics you want or a power grab? You don't think lawsuits will ensue? County Council, where are you? Number four. How many businesses closed for good? Shouldn't more of the CARES Act be used for small business? County Council, where are you? Number five. I'm beginning to wonder if you know how we really feel about any kind of merger. We don't like it, and we let you know last time we voted. Don't want a Hansel-Gretel governance. County Council, where are you? Number six. Drive-by real estate increases. County Council, where are you? People are getting fed up with your antics while you continually point your finger at us, your citizens, the ones you say you represent. And I have to cut it off there at 400 words.
Madam Chair, continuing. Number six. Missouri 63033. Which is located in North County, President and Secretary of the Paddock Forest Residents Association and Chairman of the North St. Louis County Problem Solving Committee. My comments this evening are with regard to the proposed Montinito Residential Eating Disorder Treatment Facility at 7190 Christopher Drive in unincorporated St. Louis County. I'm in support of the adjacent residents who are in opposition to St. Louis County allowing this business entity to operate in a residential neighborhood. Anyone with any comment should know that this community is not the place for a treatment facility. This should be located in a business park near a hospital or a medical center. I'm sure that a Montinito residential eating disorder facility would not stand a chance of being allowed to operate next door to County Executive Dr. Sam Page's estate in Creve Court. Why should the people in South County have to put up with this? We wouldn't want residents in North County either, and we would fight it as the residents in South County are doing. So St. Louis County needs to do the right thing and not approve this facility to operate in a residential neighborhood. Following a comment from Tom S. University City, Missouri 3130. There are still questions about Bill 109 and proposed $2 million contract with Trinity Services, Services Group, Inc., to provide food services and vocational programs for the county. A headache. Those who think are authoritative in the county must have second thoughts. It's hard to imagine the county needs to spend $6 million for face masks. It has still not been explained how $2.6 million could be given out for food grants and who made the decisions. It looks like favoritism and politics played a part. Thank you for listening to my comments. Comments from Christina Laurie at 7186 Christopher. I'm writing you a reference to the mental psychiatric treatment facility slated at 71 Christopher Drive. We were informed of new plans submitted to the Planning Department on 14th, 2014. The first three lines are as follows. The following responses are in reference to the comments regarding the site development plan for Montinito and affiliates located at 7190 Christopher Drive. In the effort of being completely transparent, this development is for a eight-patient residential care/assisted living facility designed to the IRC per section 310 of the 2009 IBC, which is the International Building Code. Here are some facts that the plans let us know Montinito is not what they claim to be. Number one. Eight-patient residential care facility/assisted living facility. Wow. Not an adult daycare is stated on the first plans. Number two. Page 200, Department of Public Works. Parking calculations stated 12, but now reflect 8. Revised to the allowable number or contract planning department for CUP information. Trying to get this approved through backdoor channels, in my opinion. Number three. Page 3, number 300, Planning Department. Revised parking calculations. One space for two units plus three spaces for every three employees on the maximum shift. These are not units. These are bedrooms. Units are found in the ALFs. Look up the definition, the IBC, that's in quotes. There is an eight-car garage on the property to accommodate- There is an eight-car garage on the property to accommodate the 8:2 ratio of a group home, but not for the medical treatment facility with an entire medical staff on site. This is only a shell game. No, it is actually a bait-and-switch tactic. Say the facility is for eight, but then use the units like you would for an ALF so that we get all 11 additional parking spots we need for the 10 to 12 staff members who will be on morning shift. It is not quite transparent to me that what not Montenegro really is. A medical and psychiatric for-profit treatment facility. They come right out and say it themselves. I ask you, Dr. Page, Ms. Choate, what medical psychiatric facility would, could, would be zoned in a residential area, first off, without a hearing? The answer, none. Sincerely, Lieutenant Colonel Christina Lowery. Following comments from Kathy Ellis, 7140, Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri 6129. Dear County Council members, please stop Montenegro Corporation from running their business in our neighborhood. They are a corporation with a full rotating staff and temporary guests and visitors coming and going. They are for... Excuse me. They are a for-profit business, not a group home. The county building department failed us by their oversight of letting a medical treatment facility in because they said they were a group home. They do not belong in an established residential neighborhood. Please use your authority in a positive way to represent us and help to stop this injustice. Most residents in the area are upset at finding out what Montenegro tried to keep a secret. We were all let down by our county when we were ignored in this matter. It had been going on behind our backs for a long time, and we should have been considered. It's also a very dangerous location for Montenegro Corporation to run their business, adding a lot more daily traffic, making it unsafe for all the residents who have lived there and paid taxes for years. If you... I think you would all feel the same way if this was your neighborhood. We have a petition of 500 residents and growing who are against this business coming into our neighborhood, and we need you to represent us and overturn this misapproval. Please do the right thing and help us. Thank you. Following comment from Rich Ellis, 7140, Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri 63129. Dear County Counselor's Office and Planning Department, where is the transparency for the documents and process related to the Montenegro purchase of a private home to be used as a business? Seems to me that career politicians have determined that they can try anything undercover as long as their constituents don't call them out on it. Reckless actions like letting Montenegro establish their business in our residential neighborhood will be remembered in the upcoming election cycle. Sincerely, Rich Ellis.
Our next comment comes from Michael Ari, 279 Great Cliff Bluff Drive, St. Louis, Missouri 63129. I want to voice my continued opposition to the proposed commercial use of 7190 Christopher Drive by Montenegro and affiliates. As the May 14, 2020 letter of Montenegro's consulting engineers, Stock and Associates, makes clear, this proposed development is for an eight-patient residential care/assisted living facility, not a group home. As a result, I do not believe that the proposed use complies with applicable residential zoning ordinances. Additionally, even if the development could be somehow shoehorned into the zoning classification, the proposed changes to the property, including the addition of numerous parking spaces in the front yard, is absolutely inconsistent with the character of the surrounding homes and will forever negatively impact the neighborhood. It is incumbent on the county executive and the members of the county council to protect the citizens of St. Louis County and deny Montenegro's proposed use of this residence for unabashedly commercial purposes. Thank you very much. Madam Chair, that completes the public forum for this evening.
Thank you. We will proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number 120, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $150,000 from the Missouri Secretary of State, appropriating the same for support of supplies, materials, equipment, and licenses for elections in August and November 2020, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary Bill number 121, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway, an ordinance amending ordinance number 26,876 by repealing and reenacting Section 1 pertaining to a contract with Adolino Winters Hubner, Inc. for consulting services in connection with construction of restroom projects in three county parks. Bill number 122, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance declaring the public necessity of and providing for the opening, widening, and establishing of a section of public road designated as Big Bend Road lying wholly within unincorporated St. Louis County, Missouri, directing the acquisition of real property therefore, and authorizing the county executive to execute contracts, agreements, and related documents, AR-1724. Bill number 123, introduced by Councilmember Fitch, an ordinance requiring the filing of financial interest statements by emergency operations personnel appointed by the county executive to assist with emergency management operations during the state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Madam Chair, those are the bills.
Um, thank you. We will actually... I just learned that there was a comment that was missed during public forums, so I will return it back to our administrative director, Diane Valenti, to go ahead and read that comment that was accidentally omitted.
I apologize, Madam Chair. The final comment actually came from Jeff Lowery at 7186 Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. I live... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm writing in regards to the property at 7190 Christopher Drive. I am again writing to you this week requesting that steps be taken to assure that Montenegro Corporation is not allowed to proceed forward with opening their commercial businesses intended in our residential neighborhood. I don't know that I have anything really new to offer this week in my letter to you. I would just like to repeat the highlights of previous letters. Montenegro Corporation is a medical treatment facility owned by Levine Lightman Capital Partners, which is an independent investment management firm that has... that manages over $10 billion of institutional capital since its inception. They call themselves a group home so they can get in neighborhoods, but they are nothing more than a for-profit business. They bill privately at a rate of $30,000 per month if their services are not covered by health insurances. The easy math says that times eight residents is $240,000 per month and over $2 million a year. That does not sound like any other group home that I know of. It is a commercial business trying to get into a residential neighborhood. They are attempting to expand their parking lot area in order to accommodate the increased vehicular traffic that will come along with opening. This will surely create more foot and vehicle traffic on a narrow, winding, two-lane road that will present an increased safety risk to both the residents that are being treated there and the local residents that live in the neighborhood. While they are current... While they currently are slotted for eight residents, the home in question is over 14,000 square feet, and I am sure that Montenegro does not intend to stop at just eight residents. More residents equals more profits. This in turn will increase the safety risks of all in the area even more. Lastly, I would like each of you to ask yourself this question. If this proposed business was attempting to move into your neighborhood, would it have been allowed to happen? I know it would not have been rubber stamped if it was next door to Dr. Page, Beth Orwick, Gail Schott, or any of the council members or anyone else involved in the county government process. But since it wasn't, it was allowed to move forward. I request again that you put a stop to this and do not allow them to start business. Sincerely. Again, my apologies. Apologies, Madam Chair.
All right. We will proceed with perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 5, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch, Tracus, and Harder.
Please hold on the order of business.
Bill number 5 is held.
Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Sorry. Please hold on the order of business.
Thank you, sir.
And Councilwoman Tracus, we cannot... Oh, there you are. Okay, we lost your face for a second. Bill number 32 is held.
Bill number 36. Bill number 36, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
Please hold on the order of business.
Bill number 36 is held.
Bill number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
Please hold Bill number 76.
Bill number 76 is held.
Bill number 109, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Um, we will hold this bill again. Bill number 109 is held.
Number 113, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 113.
Second.
Second. Dunaway.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 113 is perfected.
Bill number 114, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect Bill number 114.
Second by Fitch.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 114 is perfected.
Bill number 115, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 115.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 115 is perfected.
Bill number 116, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 116.
Second.
Daze.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Bill number 116 is perfected.
Bill number 117, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 117.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 117 is perfected.
Bill number 118, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect Bill number 118.
Second by Fitch.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Bill number 118 is perfected.
Bill number 119, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect Bill number 119.
Second by Fitch.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 119 is perfected. Moving on to final passage.
Bill number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill number 320. Bill number 320 is held.
Substitute Bill number 2 for Bill number 385, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold substitute Bill number 2 for Bill number 385.
Substitute Bill number 2 for Bill number 385 is held.
Bill number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold Bill number 14, please.
Bill number 14 is held.
Bill number 111, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 111.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 111, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 111 is finally passed.
Bill number 112, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 112.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 112, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 112 is finally passed. Moving on to resolutions. Go ahead.
Yeah, moving on to resolutions, Madam Chair. We have two this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Gray, Daze, Dunaway, Clancy, and Tracus.
Please read, um, I'm trying to find the resolution. The last few paragraphs, I think it's called the... Yeah.
Section 1, starting with section 1.
Hold on. Yes, please.
So, resolution number 1, section 1. The county council expresses deep concern regarding the disproportionate burden of COVID-19 on Black and African-American communities in St. Louis County, and asserts that disproportionate impact requires an asymmetrical response on the part of St. Louis County government. The council further asserts that St. Louis County government must employ short-term and long-term strategies focused on equity rather than merely equality to address the disparity in the communities most impacted. The council further asserts that such strategies must include: A) widespread testing; B) medical treatment, including treatment of comorbid conditions in COVID-19-positive individuals and preventative healthcare; appropriate support for people who must quarantine and isolate themselves, including mental health resources; investment of economic recovery resources, including access to jobs, rental and utility assistance, childcare, and other resources to help people remain in stable housing; advocacy on the local, state, and federal levels, including through the National Association of Counties, for evidence-based policies and legislation that improve health in communities of color and support local, state, regional, and federal initiatives that advance efforts to dismantle systemic racism; committed efforts to solidify alliances and partnerships with other organizations that are confronting racial disparities and encourage other local, state, regional, and national entities to recognize those disparities as a public health crisis; recognition that racial disparities often affect the delivery of human and social services, economic development, public safety, and public health; promotion of and support for policies that prioritize the health of all people, especially people of color, by mitigating exposure to adverse childhood experiences. Section 2, the acting administrative director shall send certified copies of this resolution to the county executive and the directors of each county department.
I move for the adoption of resolution number 1, please.
Second, Daze.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch? Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number 1, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number 1 is adopted.
Our second resolution this evening is resolution number 2, introduced by Councilmember Tracus. Tracus.
I move for the adoption of resolution number two, please.
Second, Harder.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number two, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number two is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business this evening, item number one.
The appointment be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Daze.
Take your pick.
I think I heard Dunaway first.
It's all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two.
The appointments of Laura Gully, Joan Kelly Horn, Gabrielle N.S. Kennedy, and Latoya Scott, and the reappointment of Bishop Calvin Scott be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second, Daze.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the appointment of Shannon Koenig be dropped from the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number three.
The appointment be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second, Daze.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four.
Um, the appointments be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number five.
The appointment be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six, fourth district.
Please, um, hold, I'm still waiting on the additional information, uh, from the colle, uh, Revenue's Office.
And that will be the order.
Moving on to new business, we have two prepared orders this evening. The first order is in the matter of the requests, certain books, papers, and records of various county departments and offices.
I move for the adoption of order number one.
Second, Daze.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Order number one is adopted.
The second order is in the matter of petition for approval of density development procedure for arbors at Summit Residential Subdivision on a tract of land containing six point oh two acres, more or less.
I move for the adoption of order number two.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Order number two is adopted. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Any comments from anyone on the council? All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Daze.
Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway.
Second, Tracus.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.